All right, good afternoon, everyone. So, thanks, everyone, for coming together. This is our study session to go into the results of our monitoring for Goal Three, which is Growth for Every Student and Elimination of Outcome and Opportunity Gaps. So Superintendent Tully, do you want to get us going?
Yes. Thank you. This is a great opportunity to update the board on the work of the district in terms of this particular goal. Of course, I would like to remind you, this is the second of five strategic plan goals that we're covering this year, which you will find that hopefully board have had an opportunity to review the presentation. But I also want to mention that Dr. Craig Foster has produced a detailed supporting document report that goes along with the presentation for board members and the public to go even deeper into the data that we are going to go over to this evening. So if there's additional questions, you may be able to find the answers there, but of course, you're welcome to ask any questions you may have during the meeting at any time. So what you will find is that the presentation is broken into three main parts. First, it's going to be looking at academic growth information. We'll talk about the measures associated with that within the goal, and then social-emotional support topics are covered. And then the last part is, of course, student disciplinary data and the conversation around that. So I'm going to turn it over to Heather Miller. She has worked with the team to facilitate the compiling of this report and will lead us this evening.
So I'll begin again. I would like to thank Director McGordy for her assistance with the Goal Three report and coming in and meeting with Director Foster and Assistant Director Tucci on some of our standardized data results and also providing ideas and probing questions for us to consider. So, thank you, Director McGordy. I'd like the rest of the team to introduce themselves who are at the table with us. So again, Heather Miller, Assistant Superintendent, Teaching and Learning and the West Region.
Craig Foster, Director of Research and Evaluation.
It looks like they're checking to see whether the mics are on or not.
I'd also like to thank there's multiple others that have -- thank you for the thumbs up in the back. Multiple others who have contributed to the information in this presentation for our strategies and supports that we're currently implementing throughout the system and for next steps and lots of collaboration and conversation around the Goal Three report. So, multiple parties. And I would mention that Assistant Director Tucci was hoping to be here this evening to present the part on the I-Ready, which he is so very passionate about and knows better than anyone in this system, but he is home feeling ill this evening. So, we wish him well. North Shore's strategic Goal Three is Growth for Every Student, Elimination of Outcome and Opportunity Gaps. Strategic Goal Three states that each student will experience continuous growth in all subjects, progress toward graduation at a pace that eliminates opportunity and outcome gaps, and receive fair and equitable treatment with regards to discipline. Strategic Goal Three is unique among the North Shore strategic goals. It examines whether the North Shore educational experience is fair and equitable for all The strategic Goal Three description and accompanying measures describes broad-based concepts like academic growth, social-emotional support, and discipline. Goal Three asks us to examine our systems and strategies of support to determine if all students in North Shore are growing academically and whether the related issues of support services and discipline are serving all students fairly. So as Superintendent Tully mentioned, this report is divided into three areas. We encompassed all of the measures within those three areas of academic growth, social-emotional support, and discipline. We have presented data slides in each of the areas. You also may note that in the report that you received from Director Foster, there were tables associated with gender. We have eliminated some of those from the presentation this evening just due to the number of slides and time, but we have referenced gender. And mostly that was due because in the academic areas, there was the differences between male and females was small in comparison to other areas. We would like to ask that you take notes, and if you would allow us to get through the academic measure section, and then at the very end, we have slides that are strategy, supports, and next steps, and then we will have discussion and answer questions then. Again, we already mentioned that the academic portion measures three ways: annual growth in ELA and math. We will report on standardized test measures from both of those areas. We will discuss subject matter mastery, which is, in our system, is elementary and secondary marks, and then access to advanced course sequences and specialized programs. And that includes enrollment and successful completion. So the three measures associated with our academic growth encompass all of those three areas. And we have divided those among the four of us here at the table. So Measure One. The best available evidence for understanding our annual academic growth is our standardized testing that's provided by I-Ready and Washington State. I-Ready is an assessment tool provided by curriculum associates, and it typically occurs three times during the school year in fall, winter, and spring. Our Washington State standardized testing system includes the Smarter Balanced, which occurs in ELA and math for grades three through eight and grade 10. And the WA-CAS occurs annually in science, but only for grades five, eight, and 11. And this evening, we will be reporting on ELA and math. We utilize standardized testing because it provides a consistent way to assess student performance. A lack of test standardization typically makes students' performance difficult to interpret. North Shore takes seriously the information provided by standardized testing because that information is vital for us to make evidence-based improvements that benefit the North Shore community. Likewise, we also use strategies to mitigate against the potential misuse of standardized testing. We also recognize that identifying a student's potential success is much more than a single test score, and you have heard us talk in multiple goal reports about the holistic approach that we take to serving all students. So I'm going to turn it over to Craig for the next section.
All right, thank you. Do I need this clicker too? Thank you. Okay, so first, when we have the report and the presentation, it introduces a little dilemma about how do you number the tables in the presentation. The tables are numbered such that you can go to the report and find them, so don't expect them to go one, two, three, four. And don't expect the presentation to have all the data from the report, because part of our goal is to leave some time for discussion. With that in mind, if I go too quickly, please slow me down, but I know it's -- I'd like to see us get through this and have more time to process than, you know, running right up against the hour, so I won't belabor all the different numbers in the table. I did want to start with this table, though, because what it shows is, at least from the perspective of standardized testing, that North Shore remains a strong school district. Compared to the state, our standardized test scores are really fairly strong. Compared to our neighboring districts, our standardized test scores blend right in, and that sets a context for understanding some of the other data that show areas where North Shore can improve to become an even stronger school district. One of those most important findings, in my opinion, is the evidence about how North Shore students do over with each successive grade in terms of making standards, both in terms of ELA and in terms of math. And what you see is a general trend that with each successive grade level, North Shore students, on average, find it slightly more difficult to make the grade respective standards that are designated by either I-Ready or the state of Washington. That effect is a little more severe in math than it is in ELA. And so here, at this table, which I can read it up -- oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you. Here, this table will show the performance of students over time. This table includes both the I-Ready and the SBA, which is nice because you could see as many grade levels as we can include with the two together. And you see that the percentage of meeting the grade respective standards, at least in terms of I-Ready, decreases slightly over time, and it's really flatter with SBA. So our students have a more easier time meeting the SBA standards. Now, one thing to understand with this table is, do notice that the participation in grades six, seven, and eight decreases slightly, and that makes those numbers slightly less reliable. Educators understandably, as we learn to use I-Ready, when they are perhaps, I think some of this is generated by advanced classes, and they think, why do I make my students take this test? They're already, you know, crushing their grade respective standards. We, I understand that dilemma. I certainly don't want to advocate wasting students' time, but this is one of the rare snapshots we get for the whole district. So we're taking efforts to say, hey, look, make your students practice it if they want the self-esteem boost, you know, that's fine. But we do need everybody to participate in it, so these numbers are a little clearer. But anyway, you could see that with the, mainly with the drop that occurs in participation from fifth to sixth grade. So here, we have by grade and by ethnicity, the performance on I-Ready reading. And what you can see in this table is that there is, there's different levels of performance by ethnicity in, at the kindergarten level. And then those differences in performance are magnified to some degree by the time that students are taking the I-Ready assessment in eighth grade. SBA tells a similar story, but I don't know why I'm doing this. I apologize there. I'm just going to add away. And SBA tells a similar story because SBA, of course, assesses grades three through 10. You see the same picture from a grade three through 10 perspective. SBA routinely has this kind of uptick that occurs in the grade 10 ELA. For some reason, the students make that, I'm glad for it, but the students make that standard. They tend to improve at that point. Here is the ELA data by, so that's SBA, ELA, and I-Ready by our, by two of our programs. So these are the, are demographic groups. These are demographic groups that can be assessed with I-Ready and SBA, so they're put together on this table that includes, you know, K through 10. And what you see here is different levels of performance for students who are designated as ELL or Special Education compared to their peers. And then you also see the trajectory of struggling at the higher grade levels occurring. This one is an SBA-only, SBA really, I-Ready doesn't allow examination into this variable. So this is our students identified as Section 504 and students identified as low income. What you generally see across the data is students identified as Section 504. They tend to perform similarly to students that aren't identified in that way, but you do see this effect with students identified as low income more commonly struggling to meet these, meet the standards compared to their peers. Turning to math, we have the same set of slides in front of you, the same, they're all cut the same way. So here again, you see both I-Ready and SBA math put together in the one data table. And in this case, you can also see that with each successive grade, students have a more difficult time meeting the grade respective standards. And that's with math, that tends to be more consistent for I-Ready and SBA. I'm sorry, I forgot to go over something here. I'm going to go back really quickly because I didn't want to miss this. My apologies. There is something in this table, and this is why I included the 21, 22, and 22, 23. There is some evidence here where the I-Ready reading scores in 2022, 23 are higher than 21, 22, and that is, appears to be related to the introduction of the inter-reading curriculum. And you can see this pattern more clearly when you get into the details of the I-Ready assessment, but we're going to hold on that until the strategic Goal One report, because that's where, you know, we really get into the earlier data. My apologies for forgetting to include that. Okay, so turning back to math, as I said, you see the students at higher grade level struggling a little bit more to perform, meet the grade respective standards. And again, you see this drop in participation that hopefully we won't see next year in the middle school grades. Here again, it's broken down by grade and by ethnicity, and you see the same pattern where there are just, their ethnicity predicts performance at the kindergarten level, and then those differences in performance are magnified by the time students get to grade Again, you see the same pattern of results with the SBA assessment. This is the math performance on I-Ready and SBA for students identified as ELL and students identified as Special Education. And generally, what you see in these results is that they struggle to keep up with their peers over time. Overtime is an interesting phrase for this kind of data because it's easy to interpret this data as longitudinal, and in a way, it is, because the majority of our students are consistent from year to year, but it really isn't entire, isn't longitudinal data, right? It isn't the same student through all eight years. It's different students coming in and out of the North Shore school system. Here's the SBA math by students identified as Section 504 and students identified as low income. And again, you see the students identified as Section 504 performing similarly to their peers. Students identified as low income struggle with this assessment compared to their peers. Not all of them, again, it's important to remember, and this is indicated in the report. It's, when you're talking about these differences, it's important to remember, there's considerable diversity in all these groups, but in terms of average effects, you see this pattern. And that takes us to one of the ways we support these students.
Thank you, Craig. We, we wanted to make sure that we reemphasized the work and the implementation on our multi-tiered systems of support across the system. We've been engaged in this work for the last two years, and this report was, this slide was actually shown last year with the Goal Three presentation, and we wanted to bring that back to the forefront, because when we're talking about how do we, what are we doing now and how do we impact these data, this data set, we think about those areas that we focus on through the multi-tiered systems of support, team-driven leadership, data-based decision-making, family-student, community engagement, continuum of supports, and evidence-based practices. And you can, if you recollect on the continuum of supports, there's a triangle there in the bottom, it's Tier One, and then Tier Two in the middle, and Tier Three. And just a reminder that Tier One is the universal tier where all students receive access to common curriculum materials, instructional practices, behavior supports. Schools use our formal assessment tools, I-Ready in grades K-8, and then also Panorama, which is a survey to determine students' overall wellness and feelings about school. We use curriculum-based formative assessments, peer interactions to determine whether students are making progress toward meeting grade-level standards and content-based standards. And we know that when we implement all of Tier One supports, there are some students that need additional supports and interventions in Tier Two and Tier Three. And we continue to define those and make sure that teachers and school principals and leaders have access to those supports. Now, I got to do the clicker right. So the next couple of slides talk about our current strategy and supports that we are implementing and that we identified. Trust me, there are many more beyond what is listed here on these slides. It was hard to capture everything that we are implementing into the system, but we wanted to just be clear that the story we share tonight with this measure is that student academic performance on standardized measures decreases as students move throughout our system, something we need to be attentive to immediately. The decrease in performance produces larger gaps for specific demographic groups, and consistently, students identify as receiving EL services demonstrate lower scores over time. And as Director Foster mentioned, the decrease is more pronounced with math than in ELA. So what are we doing? So, as Director Foster mentioned, our universal access to ELA curriculum materials with the implementation of inter-reading last year, and the professional learning around teachers' implementation of phonics and phonemic awareness, we are seeing some increases in that data set, and you'll see more of that in the strategic Goal One presentation. But we continue to provide professional learning for our teachers. We have continued to focus on those areas and added writing this year for teacher professional learning. The learning encompasses training here. Teachers come in for a half-day. We will go out to the buildings and provide training. They will go after school and get paid for their time. Really, it's about what do teachers need and when they need it, and our team is ready to go out and support. We still have our contract with the vendor for HMH coaching around implementation of the inter-reading curriculum, and that is happening across our schools. We actually increased our coaching at our Title One schools in the district to provide additional supports for staff. Our ELA TOSA also is instrumental in going out to schools, and really, when the phone rings, Assistant Director Clausen and our ELA TOSA, Andrea Schneider, say, we'll be there, when, where, and what can we provide? So it's all about customer service. We also have a group of ELA teacher leads that we bring in quarterly from each elementary school. There's one to two from each elementary, and they are the boots on the ground that can provide advocacy, communication, and leadership out in the building. They also provide a great deal of train-the-trainer model and differentiated instruction. Our focus on EL learners, you can see the areas where we are focusing on this year. And then Director Foster mentioned the I-Ready and some of the, some of the issues we've had with our teachers giving the data, the I-Ready for our students in grades six, seven, and eight. We, as a system, are directing all teachers to give the I-Ready, grade six, seven, and eight, three times during the year, so we have consistent data sets moving forward, and Director Foster alluded to that. So with that comes increased engagement with our teachers and our I-Ready liaisons, and Assistant Director Tucci and Assistant Director Smith have been doing that training Math. We continue to provide our professional learning around math with our math TOSA and with both our curriculum department, mirrored after the ELA leads. We also have math leads from every school that come in and meet quarterly and, again, provide us with information and then receive professional development in return, go out and give that into the buildings. We've been focusing on a reboot with our math expressions curriculum that's focused on daily routines for math in grades K-2 and quick practices and math reps in grades 3, 5. We also have been doing professional learning around building thinking classrooms, decimals, and engaging math for all of our K-8 educators. The elementary teams have been focusing on a math gap analysis to identify the skill areas of focus they need to do for each of their learners, and one of the things that we've been seeing out in the schools, the regional assistant superintendents have been seeing a great energy around grade-level teams coming together every six weeks for progress monitoring and looking at student data and deciding, how do they adjust, what do students need, and coming up with creative models and interventions to serve the students. And we continue to see growth in that area, and will, that will be ongoing work as we move through this year, next, and next, as that's an important tool, is to do the progress monitor, monitoring. Intervention blocks. We've also have schools that are doing something you might have heard called Win Time, what every, what students need, and they are providing opportunities for students to do additional skill development during the school day. And we have a couple of middle schools that are also trying some intervention blocks. It's not the core instruction, but it's where students are able to either push in, or our teachers can push in, or kids are pulled out during that time to receive additional skill training in the areas that they may need further development in, or even to enhance skills for students who are in high cap. I mentioned MTSS. And then the other thing, the strategic action plan goals. All of our schools have action plans, as you know, and many of them are focused, have a goal around Goal Three, and it's either usually ELA or math. And they may have a different focus area, might be writing, it might be reading, it could be math fluency, but all of this, all of the schools have that area. And as the regional assistant superintendents are out meeting with leaders and walking through classrooms, we're seeing many of those, those, those strategies associated with the goals in action. And next steps, again, there's many more than are listed here on this slide, but we focus on our EL learners specifically because that is an area of continued emphasis across our system. And actually, the strategies listed for EL learners are strategies that we should use for all kids, gathering street data, and then continuing to review and analyze the data around the curriculum and around also our interventions that we're using for students who need Tier Two and Tier Three. A math initiative, looking forward to continuing the work in math, but expanding and implementing next year, more resources connected to math expressions, doing more professional learning where it's more directed for our teachers, like we did with ELA implementation Year One, where all students receive, all teachers receive the same training, rather than just optional here or optional there, but making it systematic. Grade-level teams continuing to work together. Intervention blocks, we'll be working with our elementary principals and teams around that in March. And then, as you know, we also moved to a pre-algebra one and two scope and sequence for our middle school math program this year across all six of our schools. So continuing to provide services there. There, I will stop. And we will take questions and be glad, willing, and willing and ready to engage in discussion with all of you.
Feel free, Director McGordy. Am I on? There we go. Well, there were a couple of things. Thank you, you actually answered several of my questions as you went through already. The, the bump in grade 10, I'm curious about. I know that the, certainly the, I want to say BSA, SBA, thank you. The SBA is given in grade 10, and that's kind of the first one in several years. Is it just because everybody is taking it in grade 10, or is everyone even required? It's, it is required for graduation, right? Yeah. There you go. That's what I was looking for. Yeah, yeah. Okay. And then with respect to, I guess, when you started off with how we compare to the state and to our peer districts, neighboring districts, I'm wondering, do those same peer districts and/or the state see the same decline in test scores as the kids go through different grades? You know, I can't imagine this would be something unique to, to North Shore.
It, it isn't unique by any stretch. So if you go to the OSPI report card, you can So if you go to the OSPI report card, you can find results broken down by ethnicity, and you can find results broken down by grade, but you can't break them down at the same time. So in terms of that kind of over time or by grade level analysis that you have in a couple of the tables here, you won't find that. But if you look at the general percentages that our neighboring school districts have, you can see that every one of them is encountering the same challenge that we are. And obviously, if any of them, you know, had wildly successful results, we would give them a call and say, you know, "What magic have you found?" But I just, the comparisons too, it's good to be cautious about understanding that, you know, the picture of this looks different in each school district, and then you have this other complicating factor about whether students are even taking the test, because the way SBA, the state calculates it, if they don't go take the test, then it's counted against you. That isn't the case for the majority of the data that's provided in your report, because it's taken straight from the data itself. But these are all things that complicate these kind of comparisons, but by and large, it doesn't matter. What you really see is it's a very similar picture.
Well? Okay, so I have two, just, well, one, just a real quick question. For the SBA scores, does non-participation count as a zero? Is that in those numbers that we were looking at?
It counts as a zero in the first table, which, that data's all available in OSPI. So that, it counts as a zero there, but the remainder of the data, it does not count as a zero, because the comparisons are based only on the students who actually completed the test.
Okay.
Which I think most people would agree, it's for our purposes, a better way of examining the data.
Yeah, thank you.
My pleasure.
Agree there, too, yes. And then I had, oh, so I recognize the absurdity of testing our English language learners on English language skills. That does seem to be not the best use of their time, but nonetheless, here we go. But I do, the middle school numbers are pretty horrific for our ELL students, and I'm wondering if that speaks to perhaps a more systematic support for reading intervention at the middle school level. I'm seeing smiling from...
Yes? Yes, I think we need to find a way to provide systematic support in our middle schools, especially in that area, yeah. I don't know that we have the magic answer, but yes, I think we need to find a way to do that.
Right. I have no authority, but that's the question. Okay, then math, I have a part A and then part B of the question. So my part A is, have we dove into the why of the math test scores? Is it conceptual issues, they don't know their math facts, they can't do algorithms, the vocabulary or academic language is not working for them? Is it our increase in absentee rate? Is it mental health? Is it lack of relevance? Is there a kind of a low-hanging fruit, if you will, of commonality of why kids are struggling in math?
So I'll mention that I think one of the reasons why they're focusing on math facts this year in fluency is that is the area that was identified for our youngest learners, where they struggled, if we looked at our, if we dug deep into the iReady piece of the data. And by doing more consistent systematic routines with our younger learners, if we can build those skills early and do early intervention, it's going to help them become confident math students down the road. So that is where I would say, I'll focus there. I think everything impacts, but that's what the focus area has been this year, and some of those math routines and fluency, number, number facts, numeracy is where we're focusing the professional learning on. And we're doing some, I know Superintendent Tully in the East Region and Dave Wellington might be able to speak to that, but was doing a lot of work with Shannon Keebler, who we're hoping to hire next year for professional learning opportunities, and their focus was on those consistent math routines.
Yes, exactly. So that was a major, using the same instructional materials we've had for years, but really, those daily math routines are critical, particularly to achieve grade-level fluency. So, exactly.
Okay, and this one I do not, that was great. I'm loving that both of you had answers for those questions. This one, I do not expect an answer. I'm just planting the seed, if you will. So we know in this bright, shiny new world that's coming, that kids are going to need literacy skills and math skills, that that is not changing. But before we put a lot of energy and towards teaching towards some standardized tests that are likely to become irrelevant and obsolete, should we pause and have a conversation about what are the math and literacy skills our kids are going to need in the new world? AI, but just in general, yeah. Yeah, there's a new world coming, and rather than, before we really put a whole lot of money and energy into the SBA and iReady, should we make sure that those are reflective of the skills that we think our students are going to need in this new world that is coming at us?
I'll hand it to Director Foster. I know he's anxious to say something, but I wanted to mention that OSPI has teacher teams working on updating and revising our current standards to more accurately reflect. And so those, I think math is one of the first ones out, so maybe next year, we should be seeing what those standards are.
I guess my wondering is, to what degree the skills that are measured by SBA or iReady are actually becoming irrelevant? Is high-frequency words becoming irrelevant? Is algebraic thinking becoming irrelevant? But you bring up a great point, right? We know it's changing, and it's easy to not be forward-thinking enough and to be used to what you're doing. And so I think that type of analysis is really important. But for me, I'm just not ready to let go altogether. Like, when I look at the math test and I think of algebraic thinking, to some extent, I see it as a test of working memory broadly. And I know the literature on algebra by eighth grade is really rather powerful in terms of what it predicts. Now, that doesn't mean it's necessarily causal, and you get in all those discussions, but I think we need to be really careful about not being too quick to say, "Students aren't going to have to be able to write, you know, an eloquent letter anymore." But you're not wrong at the same time.
I apologize if I didn't ask that clearly. That's exactly what I was getting at, is let's look and talk about, kids absolutely are going to have to problem solve. They're absolutely going to be, statistics is going to be very important for them to understand.
Visualizing big data.
Right. Reading literacy, we know that's going to be huge, but also, does SBA test for, you know, digital media literacy and being able to distinguish fact from fiction and what are, right? So is it just a conversation? And I am not the expert, and I am not expecting to be that, but should we be having that conversation before we hold our system accountable to tests? Are they testing what we think our kids are going to need, skill set-wise?
We should, and I think that's where you see some of that work beginning, was in the Goal Five presentation, where there's this increasing post-COVID emphasis on what are the skills that our students are going to need? And then we can, I just made a note, we can highlight this issue, because the AI and information literacy is part of our Goal Four, that, and there's an opportunity there to really develop that type of thinking. And you won't get a bigger advocate than me to point out to people that people who are traditionally really intelligent are plenty capable of forming very odd ways of solving social problems. And the North Shore Strategic Plan does a nice job of addressing that with introducing a critical thinking goal and having a broad strategic plan that is largely around solving social problems. So that really can't get lost in all of this, and it's an important point about the limits of the standardized testing, which is important, but not everything.
Thank you. This is such a great conversation, and somewhat in keeping with some of the maybe more philosophical questions and comments that I threw at you guys during the week, for which I apologize, by the way. But, you know, my thoughts were going in a very similar place, but more along the lines of, you know, we're looking at all these test scores, and we know the kids are changing, and their approach to the testing is changing, the teachers' approaches to the testing are changing. We're questioning whether those tests are particularly relevant and how much they actually tell us. And I think later on in the presentation, you'll go to describing more mastery assessment of what the kids have learned as opposed to what tests are telling us they have learned. And I think that's another progression that we're going to see as well. So yeah, we don't necessarily want to teach to this one specific test or any one specific test, but make sure that our students understand the material and are learning what they need to learn, if that makes sense.
Before we leave this, just very quickly, the CTE skills that are listed on Washington State that, you know, we brought into Strategical Five yet, those aren't assessed by SBA. So that's, but they're difficult to, it's because they're difficult to institute, and that's just something we'll have to think about going forward.
That's actually what I was going to bring up, but it's in Goal Five. So there's a lot of, you know, we try and silo the goals, which is, they overlap all the time. Yeah. So the, what I was going to bring up, working backwards FIFO system here, partnerships with employers through the CTE program are going to be crucial for identifying ways that we can help the students see where they go in the future. And it's not to say, you know, hey, partnerships with only colleges or partnerships with only trade unions, for example, but even beyond that, and looking at models from other countries. I know that, speaking with my German in-laws, they have a pretty strong partnership over there between their public education system and the corporate system. Corporations tell them, hey, this is what we need for our workers for the next five, 10 years. I'm throwing out examples, I don't know what the years are that they look at, but very strong partnerships there so that the talent pipeline doesn't dry up. And I can tell you that in tech, an industry I'm in, the talent pipeline has definitely been a challenge locally. So there's something there between our public education system and corporations and trade unions. Going backwards, there was a question that Director Hayes brought up about why the math scores were dropping, and I'm just trying to understand if there's possibly a correlation between the amount of word problems that are given at a certain grade and ELL? And if, because I'm just watching my kids go through it, and the number of word problems have increased as the grades increase, and if we're having issues with reading through ELL and ELA, there might be some correlation there.
I'm not equipped to talk about all the strategies to support math teachers. I do know that, interestingly, by the time students get to algebra, one of the iReady reading measures actually predicts success, and it shows some of that integration between the reading problem and the math problem. And so I think you see some mild evidence for that in that particular form of data.
I just had one little thing that I've noticed a trend when you break everything down by ethnicity that seems pretty clear through ELA and math, that students, obviously, who are learning the English language struggle. And I think, you know, like you said, the word problems that get more wordy add to that. But I've seen in the demographic data, when you're breaking all of this down, that very consistently across the board, by many, many percentage points, children who are Black or African-American or Hispanic or Latino are far behind their peers. And do you know if that's, and you may not, because maybe it's not available, but is that an issue in other districts? Is it an issue statewide? Like, why are we missing these kids? What are they, how are they not getting it? Is it due to increased absences for those groups? Or do we have any thoughts or feelings about that? Because it's kind of glaring to me.
It is, yes, it is, and in surrounding districts as well.
Yep. This is not a unique situation in North Shore. This is something that we, all educators, I would say nationally, have to address directly.
And do we have a plan to target interventions for these kids? Or kind of, I know that there's changes around discipline and how that's implemented and whatever that are being done as well, but I'm wondering about a correlation between increased discipline for these groups and lower scores and academic performance in general? So.
Again, to your point, yes. So we have disproportionality within our discipline data as it relates to our various groups of students, Black, African-American, Latino, Latina, Hispanic population in particular. So that's a data set that we'll get to shortly. However, this is also true for the fact that we have not done a very good job serving our student populations that we're talking about here. So that's been a point of emphasis. So when you look at strategic action plans at the building level, you will notice that the students of focus in most cases are these populations of students we have not served well. And we're trying to shine a spotlight on it and say, okay, what are we doing differently to meet the needs of our kids?
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that that was out in the open, so everybody knows that that's what's happening. Thank you.
I just have one thing to add, and we don't, we have plenty more exciting things to talk about. So, but I would love to dive in at some time, deeper into the difference between the drop in iReady as opposed to SBA, because it's different, right? And so I think it's really helpful for us to understand, again, this is why we talk about mastery and all other ways of trying to get a good idea of how our students are doing. But I think since it's such a tool that we're so reliant on in order to gauge how we're doing across our community, I think it really behooves us to understand, because it's, in some tables, it's really different. I mean, SBA is pretty flat over time, or across grades. Point well taken, not the same cohort. Across grades, you see similar results where iReady, it's really steep. So I think that's something we should, we should learn more about. But we can keep going.
Okay, I'm looking at the time, too. This is a, Goal Three is big, so there's lots here. So the second measure that we have around academic growth, we're going to move into subject mastery, is how are students achieving mastery in their classes in content areas? And in North Shore, we use, we look at this by marks, not to confuse with grades, so it's always a little bit confusing. Here are our elementary marks by grade for last school year, so we've compiled all of the marks into one chart of how, of what students received in the levels of one, two, three, or four. I'll just remind you in the audience, a mark of four indicates a student succeeded standard, a three indicates a student meets standard, a two indicates a student is approaching standard, and one indicates a student is below standard. Most of the marks in our system were threes, and then the remaining marks were split between two and four. And there's a couple interesting things that you can see within that chart as students, students who progress through our system, and you can see in grade five, they receive usually a higher percentage of marks in Level Four. This one shows the breakdown of our marks by ethnicity. This one shows the breakdown of our marks by ethnicity. You can see that our kindergarten students are identified as Hispanic or Latino are less likely to receive marks indicating subject mastery, followed by students identified as Black or African American, two or more ethnicities, white, and Asian. So again, following a similar trend as our growth data there, our academic data. And then we have it also broken down by our demographic groups of low-income, ELL, special education, 504, and highly capable. And this, both of, the last chart and this chart encompasses marks of three or four. So we look at that as meeting grade respective standards, standards of three or four. And it shows that our students as low-income, EL, and special education are less likely to receive marks at grade respective standards than our other two groups, 504 and highly And then we have our secondary marks by grade. And secondary moves into a letter grade format system of A, B, C, D, F, and NC, which is no credit. We have a typical system for calculating the grade point average. And so we've shown you from the 22, 23 school year, all of the marks the students received within our system by grade, grade six through 12, and then the corresponding GPA. And then there's a category for other marks, which would probably include the letter P for pass and other miscellaneous marks within our system. It's interesting to note that overall, in our secondary marks, 67.2% of our students maintain all marks at a C or above. And as students progress through the system, closer to grade 12, there are, the percentage of As and A minuses would be decreasing. And in the more Ds and D pluses, F and NC grades might, are achieved by our older grade And here are two charts showing our, Table 21 shows disaggregated marks C or above by ethnicity and the percent that of each demographic group. And then Table 23 shows our special, our additional demographic groups that we're reporting on tonight. I will make a note that we, as gender was in the report, but not here tonight, is female students were more consistently achieving satisfactory marks. But the difference, again, was not significant. And we didn't, we tried to think about next steps and what are we doing? It's an interesting, talking about marks and subject matter mastery is an interesting concept that schools talk about in different ways. We have many schools that are, really look at grading practices and what does an A mean? What does a B mean? And do some subjects, some standards-based grading practices work? We have some schools that might be focusing on a study, a book study, or the SDLT, the leadership team, might be talking about grading practices. We know that many of our schools have targeted interventions to assist students when they might be receiving lower marks or not achieving subject mastery. We have homework help at many of our schools, tutoring services, advisory during the school day also, where students can get access to different interventions. We value the partnerships with our families, and many of our teachers spend time meeting with the parents and students, both elementary and secondary, when students are experiencing academic struggles. The counselors are often involved in that. We're about to finish our first grading period for the semester next, this Friday. And then I know a whole lot of effort and energy goes into looking at specifically our high school students who might be not receiving credit in courses and how are we helping them progress towards getting back on track for the rest of the year. Our schools, some of our strategic action plans, I know that many of our high schools have often earmarked and identified not only the group of focus, which is our Hispanic students, but also how do they impact the marks for those students and the mastery and look at grades. And so that's an emphasis for many of our schools as well. So I will pause and see if there's any questions on these, this particular section.
So, again, just a quick question. Are the secondary schools now all in alignment on their percentages and grades?
They now have a 40% grading floor. And also, they are consistent in how they award grades as far as in, at quarter and at semester with specifically the no credit or the F grade. As far as from that, the percentages, are you meaning 90?
Yeah, there was, yes. Okay, so that's good.
I wanted to clarify that.
Yes. No more emails on that conversation. Thank you. That's good. Okay. And then just, as I looked at the, I understand there's a lot of negligible difference between males and females in our system in terms of qualifying for highly capable, successfully completing algebra in the eighth grade. I would argue that the grade differential is significant. It's a minimum of a 5% difference that girls are 5% higher percentage in receiving grades than boys, and sometimes as much as 7% or 8%. And I, to me, that, that is a significant, because it's consistent, grade F, all K through 12. And that's, I think, I'm gonna wade into your world there, Dr. Froster, but that's beyond, you know, data, you know, within the margin of error in my mind.
I would agree with you. Significant could be practically significant or statistically significant. It's definitely both. From a practical significance, it isn't quite as strong as some of the other factors. But that doesn't mean we don't care about it. We care about it a lot. We just only have so much time to spend with the NFT.
And I get that. I, and I know this is not isolated to North Shore, this is a statewide, countrywide, worldwide issue. But I wonder if that difference in grades is also contributing to the increasing gap in our males going on to higher ed.
I wonder, I think so.
Yes. So it, I think at some point, it's worth a conversation.
Gender is a unique story in here because it, the effect is, compared to some of the other demographic differences, mild in terms of grades. But in discipline, it becomes really big. And that needs to be paid attention to because, you know, what the solution is or what it means merits a lot of thought. But obviously, from a discipline standpoint, males find it more difficult to avoid getting discipline than females do and to avoid getting suspended in the way the school runs right now. And that's not surprising, but it is what it is.
I have a wondering, you know, if we're looking at this at grades, again, not just the percentage, but in terms of practices, is somewhat, there can be some differences aside, and then there could be significant differences that really would impact if we're looking, if we're measuring the same thing? I mean, do we have a feel for how wide the differences are in terms of, I'm thinking particularly at secondary? How wide the difference varies between different schools in terms of how, or even subjects? Or is that pretty impossible to measure?
It's not impossible to measure. I'm just gonna say that it's different. That there, I, there might be consistency within a department. For example, a math department on their grading practices or how they award students' grades for performance tests, quizzes, homework. I'll also say that there could be departments, math, that would be terribly inconsistent, too. I think it varies by school, varies by content area, varies by individual teacher. So I will say that there is, there is not a lot of consistency. I see Dave shaking his head, so you're agreeing with me. Anything, if you want to add anything to that.
Yeah, I don't know if I have a lot to add, but I would definitely say even within schools, it's significant. We did have an opportunity to bring, at the, I think it was the end of last year, groups of teachers together to talk about grades, both in middle schools as well as high schools, part of our, the work with the contract. And, and there are clear differences, right? When you bring teachers together from different schools in terms of not just norming the grades, but also just their philosophies.
Are we still having compliance-based grading as opposed to mastery or content-based grading?
We are, but we had lots of conversation about beginning to examine the possibility of standards-based grading.
That was similar to some of the thoughts that I've been having, too. And similar to the discussion we had just the other night, last Monday, in our study session about subjectivity versus the devil of standardized testing. Where, you know, you're moving away from standardization, then you have the problem with becoming more subjective, and then differences between individual teachers and local environments in the school, not to mention the students. So it's, it's a tough one. I had a similar question about, about how, well, I guess what we can read into the marks versus what we're getting from the testing. You know, you can split it out to ELL and math and different subjects. Do we have anything like that with, with the marks? I mean, certainly for, I would imagine, elementary school, you have a mark for a grade. But in secondary, do we, have we broken it out with what kind of marks different students, different populations are getting in language, arts versus math versus science? Or grades, I guess, in secondary?
It certainly, and it certainly would provide important and interesting information. The comparisons start to, you know, they, they lose some of that standardization. Students start taking classes with different levels of challenge. But, I mean, they could, they could be broken out. There's just a lot of different types of classes. And then a lot of underlying debate about how would you, you know, how do you lump them together? It can be done, it has been done, but I don't have that data at my disposal right now.
Measure three, the last part of our academic growth measures, is the enrollment and completion rate for underrepresented student groups in advanced course sequences and specialized programs. This is another method for examining our opportunity gaps, and the focus is on highly capable program, algebra by in and by eighth grade, and advanced courses in high school. So I'll turn it over to Amity, Assistant Superintendent Butler.
So just to start with, in the 23, 24 academic year, approximately 31.8%, that's not really approximate, but of the North Shore students, so about 7,500 of our students out of about 23,000, a little bit more than 23,000, met the criteria for meeting highly capable services in one or two or both academic areas. So we qualify students in reading and math. That just kind of sets the stage. So we start with Table 24. And this shows the number of students who received highly capable designation disaggregated by ethnicity and the percentage of the respective ethnicities they represent. So it shows that students identified as Asian were most likely to receive highly capable designation, followed by students identified as two or more ethnicities, followed by white students, and then Hispanic, Latino, or, and then Black and African American. Table 26 shows students and demographic groups broken down. We also have definitely our students who are identified as low-income students, special education, and are multilingual students who are not as highly represented in our highly capable services. I would like to just mention that oftentimes, if you are identified as highly capable, you also test out of multilingual student, multilingual services. So you may be identified as a youngster as multilingual. So when you have seen other data that I have maybe presented elsewhere, and so if you're young, you may identify as multilingual, you're qualified when you're young, and then you test out. So I just always have to point that out a little bit. So it's a good thing. So I just, because that number is low, I just wanted to point that out. And you are right, the male and female differential in HICAP is very small, which I was very pleased to see. Moving into the fact that North Shore, we do really strive to have all students prepared to complete algebra by eighth grade. Successfully completing algebra encourages subsequent enrollment in more advanced math courses. And this appears to be associated with positive learning outcomes for many students. So we are proud of the number of students that do complete math and algebra by eighth grade. We do show on Table 27, the number of students who have passed algebra by grade eight as a function of ethnicity. And if you look at our ethnicity, we do have our Asian students and white and two or more students as completing math by eighth grade more often than our Hispanic, Latino, and Black and African American students as well. This data is data for the class of 2027. That's where we, that's the data we used for this table. Table 29 shows the number of students who have passed algebra by eighth grade, broken down by demographics. And this shows that in the categories that OSPI identifies as low-income, multilingual, and special education, those are definitely risk factors in not passing algebra by eighth When we consider our advanced academic experiences in high school, we have five different types of courses that can be identified as advanced experiences. We have Advanced Placement or AP courses, International Baccalaureate IB courses, College and the High School, Running Start, and CTE or Career and Technical Education. All five of those provide a method for examining performance gaps at the high school level. At the end of the 22, 23 academic school year, about 64.3% of grade nine through 12 students had received a C or better in at least two of these courses. Table 30 shows the number of students who'd received a C or better in at least two of these advanced courses disaggregated by ethnicity. And Table 32 shows it disaggregated by demographics. Are, we still have our low-income English language learners and our special education students accessing some of our courses less often than our other students, but the numbers are at least are not as dramatic as some, in some of our other areas. When it comes to our strategies and supports, we spend a lot of time working very hard to provide ways to encompass students into our highly capable services. So universal screening and local norms are a standard even before this state law became and made them a standard for identification for highly capable services. We have reached out and made phone calls to those who may need more information about highly capable services and service delivery to ensure that everyone knows what they may or may not be getting into. We also provide funding to middle schools to provide math interventions. Thank you Superintendent Tully for that. That has provided small group tutoring after school, before school. Teachers really have stretched themselves to provide as much as they can this year to really support our middle-level learners. They've provided support during advisory during the day. They've carved out some portions, sometimes of FTE, that they can actually stretch a little bit more and find another class period. Sometimes that happens during the wheel with students that really need some extra mass support. So schools have become very creative, at least our middle schools have, in really working with that portion of money and making it stretch as far as they can. We also at Inglemore, the pre-IB English nine and 10, some of those are co-taught classes in preparation for IB literature and language class. There are, we now have two co-taught sections of pre-IB English nine, and they hope to add another co-taught English 10 for next year. That's all staffing-dependent. There's also a course called IB English B, which is an IB course that teaches English in the same way that upper-level Spanish is taught to a native English speaker. That's an upper-level course for students in a multilingual program. So there's some real successes going on that are outside of the norm. I know that AP and college and the high school courses are also offered and encouraged for many students as all of our other comprehensive high schools. So we do encourage students to expand their horizons and, and stretch themselves when they reach our high schools. Okay, here we go. Next steps. So math initiatives. So we really are entering into a time where we need to focus on math initiative. We're aware of that, and we are hoping to figure out how to get this done in our current situation, but we have a start as Assistant Superintendent has already, Superintendent Miller has already pointed out, some of our schools have already worked on math expressions and invited the services of Shannon Kibler. They're also using Math Genius Squad. We are looking forward to an eventual K5 math adoption, but it's something we, we know we need to look forward to and have on the horizon. Our Algebra Geometry, Algebra II Trig also needs to look forward to another adoption. We know we may not be able to do this in the next year or maybe even two years, but we know that it's something we need to be working toward, and math is something that can't be ignored. So we need to start preparing for that and doing whatever steps we can, no matter how small, but we will, we will work towards that. Pre-Algebra I and Pre-Algebra II at the middle schools and fourth and fifth highly capable services have all started their scope and sequence, and we just need to refine that. So we need to go back to the teachers and say, what worked well this year? What can we improve? How can we refine that? They have taught it now one, one year, and we need to ask them, how did it go? What were the places where maybe we were repetitive? And what can we do to make it feel like maybe you're not just marching through the curriculum every single day, but where can we stop and take some time to really think the building thing in classrooms, some of those strategies that really allow students to truly gain the, the comprehension needed in math, rather than just walking through the daily algorithms? The integrated model for highly capable service delivery is something that we will continue to roll forward. We will have all of our schools that offer highly capable services to elementary onboard next year with at least second grade, and we will roll our other schools up. Some will encompass fourth grade, some will encompass third, so we will all be in a bit of a transition. But it is exciting, and I'm looking forward to pulling mid-year data any time now. When we get done with this goal report, we'll maybe take a moment to do that. But we are excited that that has had some positives. It has also been rocky at some point, but we are moving forward, so we're excited with that. Then I think that's, those are our major next steps. Thank you.
Thank you. And just as a time check, because I know it's hard when the clock is behind you, we can go past 6:30. We don't have to stop right at 6:30, but I just wanted to let you all know we're at about 6:17 right now. But this is our time for questions.
I think it's an easy question. It's more for my understanding that the data that we're looking at, when we're looking at, and there's two examples here, 2E and 504 and SPED, what hap, or sorry, not 2E, Hi-CAP. Now you know where I'm going with this. How do we count 2E that's kind of in both categories? That's number one. And related, how do we do that with ethnicities that are two or more as well, if they've fallen to multiple of like white, Asian, Black, Latino? Or, yeah, any of the things that blend?
My understanding is that the, these are, you bring up a great point. It doesn't pertain to ethnicity, because if you're coded two or more, what two or more means is going to vary for everybody in that category. But you are two or more, and it's not going to overlap with other ethnicities. So you can view those seven categories in our coding system as mutually exclusive and exhaustive. You're in one, you're not in the others. But you are entirely correct that that way of reporting the data changes with the demographic groups, because you can be in more than one group at one time. Now, these things can be solved by breaking down the tables into multiple layers, but then you end up with, you can end up with these really huge tables, and then you get really small groups that you can't report. So it's a balance that we have to strike. But if there's something that needs more uncovering like that, we can do it. Another example would be gender by ethnicity. So we don't really have that kind of reporting in the, in the presentation. If I saw it and I thought it was important, I would obviously raise it. But, but you don't see that it would be a 21-group breakdown, right? Rather than three and seven. So it's just a balance we have to strike as we go forward. But they are overlapping in, in the case of demographic groups.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I'm, I'm just thinking about the impact to the data, because as we look at it, you know, consistently, in terms of, you know, level of completion or test scores, you know, the higher ones go to Asians, and then it's white, and then so on. I'm looking at the two or more category, and I think that's consistently coming in third. I'm just wondering how the two or more tier point, you know, breaks down and how we can get something significant and any kind of insights in understanding, you know, is the two or more, you know, when it's, I'll take my kids for example, right? White and Asian? Or is it that they're going to count towards, you know, they're, they're obviously counting towards two or more, because you said they're exclusive, but how does that affect the ethnicity when we're looking at other two or more, right? And are we missing anything? Are we, are we missing the students that are in two or more that might actually be a mix between like Black and Latino? And are they being missed in any way? Yeah.
Yeah, to be quite honest, that is a interesting issue that I have not had time to explore. And part of the reason I haven't explored it is there's only so much time and my concern that it, it's just, there's just going to be so many different combinations that it's going to be hard to draw broad conclusions. But I haven't looked at it. There, there are a lot of different experiences in there, and it would be really interesting to see. And this, this question's come up before, you know, what does that group mean? What does it represent? It's, it's just for me, it's something I have honestly not had time to delve into yet.
Yeah, and that's, that's fine. It's not like, hey, go inspect every piece of data there is out there. I'm just curious about making sure we're not missing any students. Like the data, sometimes if you don't disaggregate, you know this, we could be missing some insights in that category.
Well put.
Yes, I'm, I'm actually also really excited to see how the integrated model for Hi-CAP is working. I, I think that's, that could be very, very good and, and exciting. I also wonder, you know, kind of, kind of along the same lines as our previous topics, the disproportionality that we're seeing in the students who are accessing the more advanced courses or the, the higher grades or into Hi-CAP, is that also common? Say, school districts across Washington State? I mean, and I, I wonder nationally, too. I mean, is this, is this the same kind of trend that we see occurring? Or do we even have access to that kind of data for, for districts around the state?
Yes, it's very common. And there are some locations that have figured out how to identify students for highly capable services in a particular category or another. They're often very small rural districts that, were we to adopt that kind of a identification process, would not work in North Shore for a variety of reasons. Either the student population, if we were to use the same method of identification, the students would not be able to perform at the standard that our kids are expected to perform at, or it would, it wouldn't be accepted, it wouldn't be poss, humanly possible to do with 8,000 to 12,000 students, which are often how many we actually test in a school year. So both of those things can be a, a difficult issue to address.
Okay. I am really encouraged by the amount of kids on 504s getting really nice grades, high grades, lots of marks, and accessing Hi-CAP, passing eighth-grade algebra, they're doing great. And maybe this is somewhere in my brain today is somewhere else. Do we have demographic data for 504 recipients? Like, or not demographic data, but ethnicity great data? Like what is the percentage of, of white kids getting 504s? I'm just interested in the correlation between kids on 504s accessing accommodations and doing really, really well, because they're doing fantastically well compared to other groups? Yeah.
We have not traditionally disaggregated that down lower. Doesn't mean it can't be done, but we have not done that in our goal reports, but it doesn't mean we can't do it.
Because sort of one of the things I'm wondering about is kids who are getting a 504, obviously, somebody knows how to get accommodations, that child has a medical diagnosis, or some other way that they and their parents understand how to get those supports for them, or they know how to access the 504 supports. And so I'm just interested to know, kind of, who are those kids who are receiving a 504, because somebody knew how to ask for it?
The only thing I would add to that is sometimes a 504 is not always for an academic. And so that sometime, that, that data can all be lumped together, too.
Yeah. But, and then to your point, like, so then if there's more white kids receiving a 504, then, you know, then that's obviously probably going to bump that group up as far as their academic achievement. So I was just interested in that.
So measure four is our social-emotional measure for Goal Three. We are going to cover this in great detail in Goal Two Report. And so the only thing that we put in here was the table just showing the number of students, guidance counselors, student ratio, mental health therapists. And just for the purposes of this evening, knowing that I promised Assistant Superintendent Wellington that he would get to talk about discipline, that our, both our counselors and mental health therapists are actively engaged in providing tier-two interventions, tier-three interventions, and of course, universal tier-one meeting with all of our students and really serving as a mentor and support system. So with that, I'm going to go forward to measure five and turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Wellington.
Thank you. Measure five, reduction of disproportionality in discipline, suspension and expulsion rates across student groups, is, as you discovered last time, the tape's coming off. It almost made it. Is a very important topic to me, as you discovered last time during our conversation. I will not spend, because it's almost 6:30, and I know that you'll have questions and things to talk about, so I won't spend a lot of time with the data. No one is happier than I am to have Dr. Foster here doing data tables. This is a, I don't know. Yes. So I know you've already had an opportunity to take a look at them, to, to recognize the disproportionality that is occurring in our system and continues to. It is something that we are working diligently on, and I'll talk briefly about that as we move forward. The disproportionality primarily, both in this chart as well as others, occurs with Black, African American, Hispanic, and in many ways, two or more races. And to your point, that it's a broad, broad brush that, that hides a lot of students that we need to highlight and bring forward, and I think that's very important. You have with you here demographic data, both in terms of disciplines, discipline incidences overall, as well as specifically suspension data. And the suspension data that you're looking at is short-term suspension, long-term suspension, anything over 11 days, and, and in-school suspension. So that's important to, to call that out as we're, as we're thinking through the data. I am, however, going to go quickly to strategies and supports. I've broken this down into two, two categories. One is, is technical efforts and adaptive efforts. Technical efforts are those changes that you make to the broad system. They're fixes usually in policies and procedures, they're often top-down. It's different than the adaptive efforts, which are oftentimes about hearts and minds, changing beliefs and philosophies and ways of thinking. Both are equally important, one's not more important than other, but both absolutely have to happen if you're going to make an impact in terms of how you're serving students. I'm actually going to, because of time, do something I typically don't do, and that's just read my notes, so that I don't stray too far and I don't extrapolate or leave anything out. But in terms of the technical efforts, the first thing they'll see up there is continuing to clarify the language around the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. Director Rick Farrell and I spend lots of time looking at the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, making refinements, corrections, and then pushing it out to administrators. One of the things that we'll be doing recently is we've completed a review of our legal, with our legal team, of our rights and responsibilities around the enforcement of drugs and alcohol policy to make sure it was in alignment with the RCWs and OSPs. And more importantly, that it's providing the clarity that it needs for our administrative staff. And so we'll be pushing that out on January 29th in our training. We are also working with our safety and security team to develop language in the R and Rs to better define the roles of security personnel. And this came out of our Student Wellness and Safety Task Force, strengthening the language around the prohibition for any involvement that they would have with discipline. We think that's really important, and we'll be bringing that forward. We think that's really important and we'll be bringing that forward, um, as well. We also continue to provide data to administrators and staff on disproportionate practices and their impacts. This is really important to always be putting forward how we're doing as a system. We have a number of ways of providing, um, administrators with that data. Primarily, uh, first of all, through synergy, that's the mechanism that they use to actually input the data into the system. They also have access to, um, our data dashboard on Power BI. We talked a little bit about that in our fabulous Angie Hancock, who keeps that up to date. She is fabulous. Uh, regional supervisor, supervisors are also providing administrators with data and having the kind of conversations that we've been having over the last, um, couple of weeks. And one of the recommendations that came out of the Student Wellness and Safety Task Force was actually making sure that the data just didn't go to administrators, but actually was presented to staff as well. And so two times a year, we take advantage of that opportunity to make sure that, um, really all of us are understanding the impact that our collective actions are having on our, on our children. Um, we're also monitoring practices and data to make adjustments in real time. And that's really the work of Director, um, and Assistant Director of Student Services and the work that they're doing with, um, their administrators. Um, I hear a lot from our principals, how wonderful they are, um, being able to provide that, um, real in-time information and help that they need to make good choices. In terms of adaptive efforts, which of course absolutely also have to be taking place, we have a number of things on the list. The first is understanding this, disciplines systemically as an organizational routine with discrete components that impact the cultural beliefs and personal experiences and bias. And I think this is really important, that we begin building this frame as we have. Uh, about two years ago, we started building this frame out. Um, and some of you were there, um, at our January, um, presentation last year. So we're actually, this is January, it'll be the third presentation that we've had. Over the last two years, we've worked to build the frame for thinking about student discipline in relation to our ultimate objectives of student success, social emotional health, and I would argue joy. I think that's a big part of it as well. Um, part of that frame has been an examination of discipline as part of a much larger social construct, as well as a product of our personal experiences, the history of education, as well as where we all sit in terms of our organizational structure. Though we have the best intentions, our efforts at creating discipline routines within our schools sometimes don't have the desired effects, I think, as we're, as we're seeing in part tonight, as well as in other places. Um, when that happens, it's typically because we're either overreacting to behavior, um, that takes place. We are in some way narrowing our focus on rules rather than relationships. That sometimes happens as well. Or we're simply skipping the part where we're actually looking for the underlying, um, reason why we're having the behavior. What is the, what is the purpose of the behavior and how do we get under that? We are also working and began this, uh, this summer to highlight the many discrete aspects in terms of discipline, um, and the philosophy that underpin those, um, decisions. We started this summer asking administrators to identify all the ways students are, uh, what we would call selected for discipline, right? When we're in the cafeteria, when we're in the classroom, when we're in the bus line, when we're the assembly. Um, who are those students that we're seeing and why, right? So that's the first part, is asking administrators to think through that process. And who in their systems are doing that selecting? And then the second part, which we'll begin talking about now is, and so now, um, how are we engaging with those students? And what are we doing about it, right? What are the, what are the behaviors that we're seeing? Um, and then finally, um, how then are we going about, um, providing those consequences? And most importantly, what are we doing afterwards, right? After the consequences are provided, then that becomes the time for the restorative component. That's super important. Consequences aren't bad if they're administered well, I think we all know that. Um, in fact, they're an important part of the restorative process. They create boundaries for our behavior. I recently got a reminder note from the city of Kenmore that my behavior perhaps driving through a school zone needed a little consequence and they provided that. We know that that's important, right? That keeps us all safe. Yep. Um, discipline also says that we have high expectations for kids. It says that we love them and we care enough about them, um, to have those high expectations, that whatever has just happened may not be what we were hoping you would do, but that there's always a yet, right? And the yet part is the restorative, um, aspect part. Over the last two years, we've had a number of opportunities to bring restorative practices into our district. Um, these are just practices, right? It's not a formula, it's not a, it's not a program, it's practices. And at some point, I have here, yes, there we go. Um, it's a way of reframing our objectives around student behavior to be more student-centered, right? And also to be more environment-focused, what's happening in the environment. It's actually, um, engineering for success for the student. First, we create classrooms and school cultures that engineer success for students around behaviors that support their learning and their peers. Um, I won't go into all the details because we don't have the time, but if you go back and look at the restorative practices, um, training that we did, you'll see that process of starting with, um, what are those, um, expectations that we have? What are the, and then we go to what are the strengths and needs of the students? And how do we go about creating the environment through either, um, classroom charters, community building, um, that's actually going to create an environment where students are asking themselves, what do I need to be successful? What behaviors do I need to exhibit both for myself as well as, um, for others? Restorative practices are a really important tool. I was thinking about this the other day as I was putting up a picture frame with the back end of a butter knife. I won't ask how many have done that. I have lots of hammers in my house and I know how to use them. But sometimes we don't always have the tools that are accessible and oftentimes when we're under stress, um, oftentimes when time is of essence, um, we reach for the things that are the easiest and we don't always reach for the tools that are gonna be most beneficial. And while it's fine to, if you're putting up a picture frame to use the wrong tool, um, that can be deleterious for students if we're using the wrong tools when we're actually working with our kids. And that's really an important component of, of that aspect. Identifying ways to change the experience of students in schools, the belonging, the relevance, the agency and the success, that is super important. Um, we will find as we look at, um, goal two, that that's really an important component and kids are letting us know what kind of experiences they're having in our school and how we're doing, um, serving them. Um, we ask a number of questions about how they feel about their school experience, their sense of belonging, their relevance. Um, we'll talk more about that in a month. But one of the things that we initially find in the data is that not every student is having the same experience. And unfortunately, it's predictable based on the things, right? The, the many categories demographics that we've seen so far that we've talked about, it's not surprising that their experience oftentimes matches their grades, their attendance, their discipline, right? Um, and then finally, the thing that we need to continue to work on, and I would put this under next steps as much as those strategies, that we're striving as a system to ask who's at the table and whose voice is being heard. I think that we're, um, continuing to do that. We have a lot of ways in which we're doing that now. Our natural leaders organization has, um, roots in a number of our, um, in a number of our buildings. Our Family Engagement and Resource Center opened its doors recently and is doing great work. Um, recently at the school board meeting, we heard about the North Shore Special Education Council. It was recently formed, right? And all of these are really important components. But Chris Imden and Mohammed Khalifa, who actually came and gave presentations to, um, staff and students um, over the last couple of years, um, they asked us specifically, um, to really think about to what extent is voice efficient? And when do we need to start thinking about a deeper level, right, of influence? And, um, and ways in which that they're engaged. To what extent are our families and students, particularly, um, students that we're talking about today, right? To what extent are they giving it a seat at the table and are participating in the policies and practices that we're engaged in conversations as well? We've begun this work, we're inviting students and family members to sit on the advisory councils, school leadership teams, REJ committees, safety and wellness task forces, but we've got more work to do, right? And I think ultimately, our students will not experience a sense of belonging, relevance and agency that we just talked about until their families do as well. And so I think that that's something that we need to continue to work on if we're going to actually impact. And it's not just the discipline, but I think everything that we've talked about so far today. I should probably stop talking.
How are we reaching the families that are not aware of REJ opportunities and committee opportunities?
It's a great question and we, we've been working pretty hard in the, in the communication department and other departments, but I don't know that we have, um, the assessment, uh, mechanisms necessarily to know if we're actually connecting with everyone. We, um, have gotten much better in recent years in terms of making sure that our communication, all of our communication is actually, goes out in multiple languages. Um, when we can, we also send communication through teachers, right? Which also, um, creates a sense of, urgency is the wrong word, but connection, right, with school. But, um, yeah, it's a great question.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent, uh, Wellington. That was, uh, that was very, very well done. Um, first, I, I guess, um, I wonder again, not so much about how consistent these disproportionals are between us and other districts. I think I know the answer to that, but, uh, recently, say recent years, um, are the numbers consistent over time? Have we seen the needle move at all over, say, the last? I know there's a lot of disruptions over the last four or five years, but in, in that timeframe.
I'm glad you reminded me of that. We have seen some, um, we've seen primarily coming out of the pandemic increases in, um, both discipline as well as disproportionate discipline. And one of the things that I'm trying to work through in, in my head is, is whether or not, um, we're all consistent in terms of how we're inputting, um, discipline. And also whether or not discipline itself and being in the system is necessarily bad, right? So if we see an increase in the number of, um, administrative conferences and a decrease in suspensions, I would say that that's, even though it may be an increase in what discipline looks like, it's actually headed in the right direction, so we need to think through that. Um, what I did is looked at the last four months, um, September through Oc-, uh, September through December. Uh, just, January data is not in here yet for the last two years, the twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four. And as I think I mentioned last time, we're actually seeing, um, a reduction in suspensions by about twenty-eight percent, which is a, which is a good sign. We are seeing actually a reduction of about fifty percent, um, in suspensions for our students of color in high school, which is great. We're seeing roughly fifty-two percent reduction in discipline overall. In middle school, we're seeing a twelve percent reduction in discipline, but we're not seeing any reduction in the disproportionality component, right? So we've got some thinking to do from that standpoint. So what I would love to say, uh, and then, um, in special education, over the last four months, we've seen a decrease year over year of about twenty-five percent, which translates to, you know, almost thirty fewer students being suspended this year than last year. So is that going to be a permanent interruption? Um, I hope so, right? I hope that we'll be able to continue that work, but, um, time will tell.
Very good, thank you. That is, that is some promising. Um, so my, my thoughts also went back to our conversation about subjectivity, uh, in these, in discipline and the, giving, giving discipline, how it might vary by individuals, um, which made me think about, um, potential threat perception depending on who the teacher is, who the student is, and how that can vary. That could vary widely. Is that related to what you've, the threat inquiry protocol that you've, you've seen out there? And if you could just describe that for me?
Yeah, so, um, what that specifically is about is, um, we have a different protocol. Um, we're refining the protocol for when, um, a student makes a threat either towards a student or another staff member and identifying, um, how significant that threat is and what the next level of support is that we need to provide to the student, to the staff member, to the other student, um, et cetera. So it's specifically, it's a, it's a very narrow band of, um, the way we look at it. Yeah.
Mine was just gonna be about special ed. My, my good friends in the special ed department probably love me. Um, I'm looking at the discipline by demographics and I'm assuming that, you know, based on some of the things you were saying, that, you know, obviously, um, discipline incidents with students who receive special education services are obvious, very different than they are for a lot of other students. And, um, I think that kind of goes back to something that was brought up or that we talked about last week at the study session about, you know, the subjectivity of what constitutes behavior and what constitutes behavior that is problematic and, and all of that. Um, but it's, this is particularly what I was thinking about when I was talking about problematic behavior and how it's interpreted and what the next steps are. So I'm really excited to hopefully see some big changes with, um, you know, how people are interacting with kids who have different behaviors than what is typically expected, particularly by, you know, some, um, some community members. So, yeah. It's great, thanks.
Not so much a question as a comment, just observation. Um, so I'm reading, uh, the first twenty-five, which is a compilation of oral histories. Um, the Little Rock Nine, uh, was the central high, high school of first nine kids. Two years later, they, um, took twenty-five kids and integrated their junior highs. And so this is the oral histories of those twenty-five kids. Uh, the reason I know about this book is, our Kenneth Jones was one of those twenty-five kids. And so, um, my takeaway as I'm reading the book is there's, there's three commonalities and, and these oral histories were done sixty years after this experience. But every one of them talked about the importance of family support, how that was necessary for them to get through this experience. And, um, so I'm just kind of wondering if maybe that's, rather than how do you get involved with us, we're asking, what are you doing to support your kids? How are you supporting your children? And starting there, find out what they're doing. Um, the lack of teachers seeing them, that was a pretty universal. And then there was one story about a custodian recognizing that they needed a safe place to have lunch, but universal, they were talked about, the teachers didn't see them, that they didn't interact with them, um, didn't protect them. Um, and then that they weren't able to participate in all the opportunities. Um, I think one junior high, they got to participate in sports, but our Kenneth Jones was a clarinet player and he couldn't participate in band. Um, they couldn't do drama, they couldn't be in student leadership. And sixty years later, how much that was still bothering them, that they could not participate in opportunities, so.
That's, that's very important to, to bring up, right? The student experience is really what the numbers are, are reinforcing. It's a really good point. So unless there's anything else, I can't wait, it's six forty-nine. I'll go ahead and adjourn the study session. Thank you very much, sorry for our rushed conclusion. This is, this is a lot of helpful information. So thank you, everyone, for all the effort, appreciate it.